Hello, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you for coming tonight to our Meet the School Board Candidate Night. I'm Mika Busek and this is Amber Green and we are the co-presidents of the Pleasantville Education Association this year, who is sponsoring this event. So, tonight, what we will be doing is we have three candidates for two available positions on our school board. And as you can see, two of them are in person here tonight and one of them is with us via Zoom. And we have Dr. Andrew Green, who's a political science professor at Central College, who will serve as our moderator tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome candidates. In a moment, I'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to the audience. After opening introductions, I'll be reading a series of questions that have been developed by the Pleasantville Education Association. You will have up to five minutes to respond to each question. You may use less than that allotted time of five minutes if you so choose. While we will not be taking questions directly from the audience tonight, the Pleasantville Education Association encourages audience members to visit with each of the candidates after the end of the forum this evening. And so with that, we'll go ahead and start with introductions and we'll go in alphabetical order by last name, so we'll start with Angel Bingham.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Hope you guys can hear me okay. And I just want to say thank you so much for the association for hosting this because I know it's so hard to connect with people. Everybody's got their own schedules and everything, so this is awesome. My name is Angel Bingham and I have lived in Pleasantville for over 11 years now. And my husband is Brandon, who is from Pleasantville. And then we have two kids, Bailey and Grayson. Bailey's a first grader, Grayson is a third grader at Pleasantville. And we are kind of that accidental family. Brandon never thought that he would move back to his hometown after he went off to college. And I don't know if that's just something that all young kids think, I hope not. But I fell in love with an acreage in Pleasantville when we first were together as a couple. And we looked there and I just kind of sweet-talked him into I wouldn't let him say no. And it turned out we got the property and we kind of put down some roots and we got really involved in the community as the years went on that we've lived here. And I just kind of fell in love with the place. I knew it was a small town, I knew everyone knew everybody. And I was a little worried about, you know, I was from a small town and I knew, you know, if they're not from somewhere, you know, people welcoming you in and that kind of thing. And I just got such a warm welcome from Pleasantville and I knew it was different. And I knew it was the right place to raise kids. And I talked him into taking the city job when the Parks and Rec Department started. And that kind of just really immersed us in the community. And I really got to know a ton of Little League families by helping with the concession stands and such. And so that was a good learning purpose. Kids are all like graduating or have graduated. It's crazy to think that we've been here that long. Kind of see a whole cycle of kids go through the school system. And I mean, no matter what happens with the school board, we're not going anywhere. We absolutely love Pleasantville. We both have big hopes and dreams to have our small businesses here. Brandon has a marketing company that is all the way in Monke. But we would love to have it headquartered in Pleasantville someday. So that the tax base, if it's headquartered in Pleasantville, all the tax base of his company would come through Pleasantville and would add to our towns, the taxes and property taxes, obviously, and everything. So, and then we hopefully get some amazing new families that would, you know, work at Bing Bang and that kind of a thing. So, you guys are stuck with us, basically. Thank you so much for hosting this, guys. And thanks for everybody who came out tonight as well.
Thank you. We'll turn to Ron Danks.
All right, thank you. My name is Ron Danks. Been on the school board for the past eight years.
Ron, can you come up to the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know we were going podium for introductions. As I said, can everyone hear me, first of all? Okay, great. As I said, my name is Ron Danks, have been on the school board for eight years. Grew up in Pleasantville, graduated from here, went to Central College and Indiana University Law School, came back here, which sounds like Brandon. I came back what I thought would be temporary and ended up, 27 years later, here I am. My daughter Emma is a junior at Pleasantville. We love the community. I've enjoyed my time on the board. We go to St. Elizabeth's Church in Carlisle. My daughter's on the dance team here, active in some other activities in the school. My wife works at Knoxville Hospital in their billing department. So, that's about the Ron Danks story. So, I will follow Winston Churchill's advice when he said nobody ever complained that his speech was too short.
And Shane Sorensen.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. My name's Shane Sorensen. And my wife Jody and I have lived here in Pleasantville for about 18 years now. So, we live on an acreage north east of town. And we farm with Jody's parents and uncle. It's a life that I'd never expected to realize, to be honest with you. And being part of the small community, I grew up in Ogden. Was once a bulldog, never formed as a Trojan. So, I enjoy being in a small town. I enjoy that people know everybody. I enjoy the fact that I have an opportunity to do something like this. Once again, this is something I never thought I would do. Anything that's kind of halfway political, I tend to distance myself with. But being on a school board, hopefully ensuring the success of our students and our entire school system for that matter, is definitely a responsibility. I don't take that lightly. So, I appreciate your time and try to give you guys some answers on why we're doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, for the first question, the first question will go first to Ron Danks. What prompted you to, in your case, run for another term on the Pleasantville School Board?
I wanted to start off and thank, I forgot in my introduction, I want to thank the EEA for putting this on. I want to thank everybody that's here in attendance. Also, everybody that's watching online or will be watching online over the next few days. I also want to thank Angel and Shane for participating in this and putting their names on to serve our community. Like I said, you know, I think everybody has, the community's best interests at heart, you know, and we don't function without volunteers. The reason that I have chosen to run for reelection is basically the same reason I decided to run for election in the first place in 2013. And that's to help our community and to help our school district be the best that they can be. I think that the next four years are going to be really challenging for our community, for education in general, but I think we have an opportunity here. I believe that I'm a better board member than I was eight years ago. I've learned some things not to do. I've learned some things that are possible and what is not possible. But I think that the reason, when I thought about it a lot this summer, and I went back and forth several times on this, is I really believe our community and people that are on the board with me will have heard me say this, but are tired of me saying this. We're a community that's on a fault line demographically. We can either grow or we can start to diminish. And the communities, you can see Carlisle, Indianola, getting bigger, getting more housing. I looked today, because I just wanted to confirm this, but Lucas County, Mahaski County, and Monroe County have fewer people than they did after the Civil War. I mean, it doesn't take a genius to say Pleasantville's in between those. Which way are we going to go? And I think the foundation of any community that wants to grow is its educational system. If we don't have a strong school system, we're going to lose out. We have to be better. I said that on my Facebook post. We have to be better than PCM, we have to be better than Carlisle, we have to be better than Indianola. Those are lofty goals, but those are good districts. I'm not diminishing them in any way. But we have to make people want to stay here, want to relocate here. We have to make people who've moved away come back to our community. And the foundation of that is the good school system. Because if you don't have a good school system, young families won't move to your community. And if young families won't move here, eventually you lose grandma and grandpa in the Des Moines metro area because they want to see their grandkids. They want to be involved in their activities. It's not about just, you know, everybody saying we have good schools, good teachers. And I believe we do have good kids. It's about, to me, what I would like to accomplish. I want our middle school, this is an area I have not done a good job and I will be the first to admit that, our middle school, I want to improve the experience for our students, our staff, everybody involved in that. It's a tough time of life. I can't, you know, sit up here and say, "Oh, I'm running for school board because I'm going to make 13 and 14-year-olds not have any problems." That's not true, but I want to make those kids experience the best they can because I firmly believe we have to turn these kids into lifetime learners. We have to keep that spark of curiosity going in our kids. What five and six-year-old doesn't like to learn? I want that to be an 18-year-old, a 20-year-old. The best thing I love about my job, now I'm 53-years-old, the best thing I love about it is I learn new stuff all the time to do an effective job. Also, I am a huge believer in partnerships and I'll talk about that later with community colleges, with businesses, with anyone who can help improve our kids. And I, because of our size, because of the location of our community, I think we have an opportunity to be innovative in the next four years. Let's try some things, not just try, but let's try some things that we believe can work in our community to give us the best result. I noted tonight, there's a lot of folks, when I grew up, that did a lot for this community. One of them's sitting right there, John Frain, James Kelvin, Earl Wagner, who aren't with us anymore. Those men inspired me and there's a heck of a lot of other people, the people who do the pig out, Little League, and all that kind of stuff that make our community go. And that's why I'm running. That's very simply put, I want us to be the best that we can be in this town and in this school district.
And to you, Shane. What prompted you to become a candidate for the Pleasantville School Board?
Well, first of all, I want to start off by, I did introduce my son and that's why I'm doing this. Kale, he's 12, he's in sixth grade. And that's, in a nutshell, that is exactly why I'm doing this. I'm a parent who wants to make a positive impact, not only on my son's education, but for everyone involved. I enjoy working in a team-oriented environment with like-minded individuals with a common goal in mind. We're also contributing, in my opinion, to the community by educating our students as well. My family is deeply rooted here in Pleasantville, as are a lot of other families. There is a strong possibility that a number of our students will graduate and call Pleasantville home. Our students will take over family farms, family businesses, and hopefully remember that their, and hopefully remember their positive experience and raise their families here someday. It is our job to create this positive experience and leave our school, community, school and community for the next generations to come better than we found. If I can be a part in ensuring that level of success, sign me up, I'm all in. I'm a proud parent, a proud community member, and that's why I'm running. Thanks.
And to Angel Bingham. What prompted you to put your name in the running for school board here in Pleasantville?
Thank you. I heard that Kenny Sue wasn't running this year. And so I thought instantly of my husband. And I said, "Hey, you should run for the school board." And he said, "No way, but you should." And he said that, the reason he said that was because I was always sharing issues and that I knew everything that was going on and he really encouraged me to run. And then I actually ran into Kenny a couple of weeks later and he brought up that he was looking for somebody good to take his spot. And so right there, Brandon threw me under the bus and told Kenny, "Hey, I know somebody." And he pointed to me. Since then, I have had great conversations with key people in our town who I highly respect and all have encouraged me to pursue the board. So I felt like I needed that boost of confidence. I thought, "But I'm not from here." Like, nobody knows me, they know Brandon. But it helps being able to talk to the other people. And I have met with our superintendent and I feel like I understand the duties that a board member does and doesn't do. And I am confident that I would represent the parent's voice on the board, standing for our kids' best interests and helping create a culture of raising critical thinkers and leading politics out of our classrooms, picking to the academics and the trades that are going to give our kids the best opportunities for the future. Thank you.
Okay, for the second question, we'll start with Shane Sorensen. What strengths do you see here in Pleasantville schools? And what areas would you like to see improved if you were elected to the board?
Sorry, but can everybody hear me? Okay. Usually my voice projects, but maybe not in here. All right. And I apologize for reading this off here. I just want to make sure I don't forget anything. I like to make contact with people and talking to them. So if we ever have a conversation in person, rest assured I will look you in the eye on the time. I'd like to start off by just answering this. This is not a politician's answer as I truly believe our district's major strength is our teachers. And I'm not saying that because that's who's putting this on. But without teachers doing their jobs, our students wouldn't stand a chance. I believe that we, I believe I have made this comment to administrators numerous times. So I speak this from a parent who has been nothing but impressed with each teacher Kale's had. Each one has taken a genuine interest in him as a student and a young man. They have challenged him to be a better student in person. I have heard similar praise from other parents as well on this. From an appreciative parent, I just wanted to tell all the teachers that Kale has had direct contact with, thank you. Because it means a lot as a parent that our teachers do take a genuine interest in our students. And one piece of advice, because I actually went to school to be a teacher and I gave up because I had some parents that kind of swayed me a different way. And if you read my Facebook post, I won't go into it, but feel free to read that and it'll explain everything. But anyway, one thing I'd like teachers to know is please always keep in mind you are making a difference. It may not be immediately realized, but when you see students graduating and become successful in their lives, know that you had a part in that. So, I just want to offer that bit of advice. Another strength, I think, is our reputation of our school and our location to Des Moines. And Ron kind of touched on that a little bit. We're kind of on that fault line. But loving or hated, Pleasantville is growing as a commuter town and I foresee us to continue growing as such. Our location is attractive, but like Ron said, it's our school is what's going to get people here and keep people here. Growth is a good thing for our community and our school, in my opinion. It affords this opportunity that may not have been realized if we were in a stale situation. Obviously, with opportunity comes challenges as well. But I'm confident a unified community and school district can accept and overcome future challenges. The improvement I would like to see made, and this, like I said, obviously I'm running for school board. I have no idea really what the school board has done about this situation up to this point. But accountability is big for me. By accountability, I'm referring to everyone involved in the student's education. And I firmly, firmly believe as a parent, it starts with us. So in my opinion, it goes parents, students, teachers, administrators, and then finally us as the board. We all have to accept and be held accountable for our roles in educating our kids. If we all work together and do our part to the best of our abilities, our kids win. Where we or they fail is when we don't work together and point fingers without resolve. If there's a breakdown anywhere along this chain, that link needs to be called out and held accountable. Our kids' education should never be put in jeopardy by lack of communication or someone not pulling their weight. Goals and expectations should be clear and agreed upon by all. That sounds pretty simple for me, coming from a parent. That's how the business world usually works. If you're not pulling your weight, you find a new job. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that here. I'm just saying, it's just kind of the way it goes. I mean, everybody works together, you find common ground and you pull together for the common goal, which is to educate our students, set them up for success. And in my opinion, when everybody's happy, that all just flows. That all flows. So, teachers, we need to make you guys happy with your jobs, give you the tools that you need to do your jobs, and then everything, just like I said, flows. So, I guess that's kind of why I answered that subject. Thank you.
Same question to Angel Bingham. What strengths do you perceive in the Pleasantville District? And what areas would you like to see improvement?
I would love to see us build on our strengths. We have amazing teachers and staff and we have a community that loves our youth. That's saying, "If you build it, they will come." And we have been seeing enrollments rolling into our districts because outsiders see that we are different. My husband and I are constantly asking people if they would consider coming to Pleasantville. Families that we know, people we're related to, we're up to 10 Bings in the school district. I like to brag about that because I love having all the cousins in town. I hope everybody else loves it too. But the same can be said, like, we can't rest on our morals. Like, we can't think like, "Oh, this was a great year, we have all these people coming." We need, so I feel like we need to support our school employees more than ever right now. It's getting really competitive out there. Everywhere I go, I see signs for really large, you know, hourly wages everywhere, even in town, at KDCs and the like. So, but I think there are other incentives that can keep our staff coming to Pleasantville and staying here. I came from a district where we think we pay the least of all the surrounding districts. And it was like a revolving door. A teacher fresh out of college would come in and fulfill their two years and literally leave as fast as they could. We never trusted that a teacher was going to stick around, essentially. You didn't build those relationships, you didn't have those deep relationships like you see in Pleasantville with the teachers and students. We need to look at why some teachers in Pleasantville have left and why some others stay. And to build like a really strong foundation from that and ensure that we keep the ones who could be blue today. So just really not resting on our morals. And then another thing, a strength that we have is I feel like our identity in Pleasantville is our school, our strong school district. It's one of the things that just is such a foundation of the town and why so many people come to our town is because of the amazing facilities. They're Frank, kids go here, you name it, they're somehow tied to Pleasantville. And I just think it would be amazing if we could grow to change like some of the other organizations that are in Pleasantville, like the community organizations, tie them more to the school so that it's more cohesive and everyone doesn't have their own identities going on. And it would just be really nice to let the school kind of be the hub that brings the other organizations together to really build on that because everyone does know the school. We have amazing, amazing facilities and resources. So I think one of the things I'd really like to see is more of a collaboration of the community groups that we have coming together so that we can be stronger. Thank you.
And finally, to Ron Danks. What do you see as the strengths of the district and where do you see areas for improvement?
Thank you. And I'm, is this, is the mic okay or are we? It's as loud as it gets. Okay. We'll work with that. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on our strengths because I agree with what Shane and Angel said. I think we have a very good community. I'm not saying that because I'm running for school board. If I didn't think we had a good community, I wouldn't have done it. We have people that support a wide variety of activities. Our kids are really pretty good kids. You know, I'm not saying every one of them's perfect, that's not true. I'm not saying we have some kids who are going to have trouble. That's not, that's true. But by and large, I think our school, compared to when I went here in the mid-'80s, has less discipline problems with kids who are a little more focused. And that's a reflection of their home life and their parenting. I think we have a really good FFA program, which everybody knows about. We have a really good special ed program. That's something I'm proud of because there's school districts that are far wealthier than ours that just pay lip service to special ed. They really kind of, in their own way, wish special ed would just go away. I think make a genuine commitment to special ed in this community. I think that the other thing I would say as a strength for us is we do have a good staff, but I want to also retain those good people. I don't want this to be a stepping stone. We can't pay what Waki pays. We can't pay what Anki pays. I wish we could, but we have to make it through the amenities, through knowing that you're valued. We have to make it an attractive place. The good teachers want to stay. I will say, the thing I'm proudest of in my life and my eight years on the board is I think we've hired really good teachers. That, you know, we've put time in it, we've made it a focus. That's not Ron Danks, it's our administration, our board, working toward that goal. We've done a really good job in that area. Or do we need to improve? And that's, you know, the whole reason to run is to make improvements. Like I said, we need retention. We need to find out what we can do to retain our good teachers in this district besides paying them the most we can because that's, like I said, a battle we're going to lose against a suburban affluent district. But we can do other things, I hope, to keep those folks in our district and keep them happy. I mentioned the middle school, I'm going to expand on that, some ideas that I have, what we need to improve. And I keep harping on that because like I said in my Facebook post, is, everybody's kind of concerned at the beginning and at the end of the process. That's where most of our issues come from, that's where most of the attention goes. I want to make sure that middle school doesn't get left out. I also want to see and make sure that we are constantly improving our community-college relationships. I have an idea about trying to work with some private colleges, some businesses. I'd love to see us be able to do some things where we are able to be innovative, again, using that word that's a favorite of mine, to offer more things to our kids. Wouldn't it be great if a kid in Pleasantville, Iowa could take Chinese or Japanese or Russian or German? And we can't maybe do that here, but maybe we could do that in collaboration with the Central or Simpson, which are also schools that are looking, you know, but I'm a Central grad. But times have changed. They have to be looking, I hope, to do some innovative things to interest kids. And there's another thing, and I see this a lot on social media, which I try not to spend a lot, I always say I spend more time on Twitter because I talk about there's history in sports and I don't offend anybody with that, is about trades. Our trades program is so much better in 2021 than it was in 2013, it's not even funny. We've made some changes in the staffing that helped it. Our kids are doing better. We're getting kids out there that are diesel mechanics, that are doing an awesome job. But I thought about that. I don't care if you're the world's best diesel mechanic. If you could speak German, Japanese, Swahili, think of the advantage that would give you in 20, 25, 30 years when you go out and compete in this global marketplace. Because we don't control those forces. The world gets smaller every day and that's not just a trite little saying. Our kids are going to be competing with people around the world and I want them to have that base skill set, even if it's just taking a six-week course, to get better in that. I don't care whether they want to go to medical school. I don't care whether they want to be, you know, an ag representative. I don't care whether they want to be a diesel mechanic. Whatever they wanted to do, I want them to have that. Other thing, I think... Other thing, I think our kids are so pressed for time. I look around here and I think of all the kids. I was talking to a young man who's involved in baseball, basketball, football, I think track, shooting team, shows livestock. That's hard to do. And I want us, from the board and administration, to encourage collegiality among our teachers, coaches, and sponsors. It makes me feel good that we have kids who are in FFA, who are also in the play, who are also in football, are also in choir, who are also on the dance team. All those kinds of, because even in small schools, there's a real tendency to segregate yourself into those areas. And I just want to make sure that we're encouraging that from our end, not just with the kids, but with the sponsors and the coaches, that they're collaborating. And again, keep in mind, if everybody keeps the kids first in mind, what is best for the children in this district? You know, good things will happen. It may not involve me and it may not involve Shane. It may not involve Angel. It may be 10 years from now, but good things will happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Question number three. We'll start with Angel Bingham. If elected to the board, how will you work to stretch the shrinking state dollars that are coming from the state of Iowa for public education?
Well, first off, I would actually want to help lobby for more dollars from the state. We had a pretty amazing year with the state despite everything, and they are sitting on some dollars. I have built relationships with the current leadership of the State House during the past year and a half, and they want to hear from us and care about what we care about. It's very intimidating though that the State House, find a legislator, talk to them. But I will tell you who wants to talk to you the most are the leadership. Jake Chapman will just walk you right into his office and show you around. And they actually want to know, they want to know what we care about. I would like to look into what we also pay for with the ADA. Superintendent Ellsworth shared a lot, rather a large number of funds that go there, and I would like to better understand what is included. I also would like to look at corporate sponsorships to help start trades co-ops with industries in our area that are always hiring. People pay so much to train their employees and get them on board. And sometimes it's, you know, it's a very competitive field that they're in. You know, electricians and that, those types of trades where you have years of journeyman and those programs. And then for someone to just leave, they just, you know, waste so much resources. If they can catch a kid while they're in high school and start building that relationship and any type of partnership there. The same, I think you could do with healthcare partnerships, where students can start working for them as soon as they graduate during summers. And then they could attract some of the best students to stay closer to home upon graduating college. So I think there's lots of opportunities like that in our, that would help us to not necessarily be asking for money from corporations, but to partner with them to build on the programs that we already have started that are already awesome. Thank you.
Same question to Ron Danks. If re-elected to the board, how will you continue the work of stretching state dollars?
Thank you. Just saw before I came out here tonight that the legislature did approve the new map today. I think it's a terrible map for Pleasantville because we have lost representatives that we have worked with on the board, that I've spoken with numerous times. I don't know that we're in with communities that face some of the same challenges and opportunities that we do, but that's the way that it is. And I will say, if there's one thing I could do, Bob Ray had a great quote. Iowa doesn't have mountains or beaches. We don't have big urban areas. What we have is people. And if we can't retain good people in Iowa, we're done. And education and lobbying should be non-ideological, and it's not. You know, I think I have good relationships with both of our people who are representing us right now. I talk to them a lot. But what I always try to say to our legislators is, this is the one area where representing rural Iowa, you can really help us. And I would say that to our nudes. If I was at this same forum right now and I was at Waki, Waki's going to grow. Waki's going to have a commercial base. They're going to have $500,000-plus houses. Pleasantville's not going to have the commercial base Waki does or some of these other things. We need the state to understand and our legislators to understand. Rural Iowa, we need, the STEM initiative is great. Rural broadband is great. But to couple that with spending levels that allow us to attract and retain the good teachers, which allows us to attract and retain the good families. And again, I don't think that's an ideological issue. Maybe it's a rural urban issue, or more accurately, a rural suburban issue, than it is an ideological issue. But I think when you go up to lobby the legislature, you just have to keep in mind it's for the school. And talk to them. And that's one thing that I think most people support. I was out in Indiana about a month ago and I saw a guy talking about city council. And he said, you know, you could have a guy who's a huge Bernie Sanders supporter, huge Donald Trump supporter, living in the same block. They don't agree on anything. Taxes, guns, abortion. They all want the pockets fixed. They all want clean water. That they agree on. And that's what I want to see education funding go back to. That's when Iowa thrived in the seventies, sixties, the eighties. We need, we need, as school board members, to approach it, in my opinion, in that way. School finance is the hardest part of being on the board. I was blessed because we had, Troy Pedelford was our board president for a long time. And Troy really got in the weeds on that and understood it. Would try to explain it to me, sometimes without much success. But that is the hardest thing as a board member, to sit around and say, we have X number of dollars, but we can't spend it where the needs are critical. You know, that's one thing I would like to see, and that's a big haul, and it's a long haul, but more local control of how you spend your money. I also agree, any source of funding that we can get, partnering with Vermeer, with Wyler, some of these great companies we have around, anything that we can do to take the burden off the taxpayer here and give opportunities to our kids, I am completely, completely supportive of. And like I said, this is a challenge, and it's a challenge that's not going away. But also, that's something I think our community needs to speak with their legislators about. That's something that we can have direct control over when you have forms with anyone, whether it's Senator Sinclair or whoever's coming back in, to communicate with them. You know, I may not agree with you on X, Y, or Z, or maybe I think you're the greatest thing since sliced cheese on X, Y, and Z, but what really affects our community is education funding. So like I said, that's something I think that we can all work on to try to get more funding from the state, more equitable funding, particularly for rural Iowa.
And to Shane Sorenson, how would you work with shrinking state dollars to help stretch them for the kids here in Pleasantville?
All right. Some of the good answers were taken. Excellent. It's kind of one of those subjects where trying to squeeze as much, I guess, try to get blood out of the rock. That old saying, that kind of, because nobody wants to give one. Everybody wants to spend one. And I totally agree with Ron. We need to get as much money as we can from the state. Angel said it too, lobby for those funds. Obviously, they have no problem putting it on the news that they have a surplus of money. Well, in order to continue having educated, well-educated individuals to have the high-paying jobs, to pay the taxes and that kind of thing, we need to educate them when they're young. I mean, that doesn't just happen overnight. So it doesn't make much sense to me why we don't spend the money on youth when we have them in the pressable and hold that money back and have these issues in today's society. But anyway, that doesn't answer the question. Angel, I thought I had some really good ideas. These were some that I had as well. Sponsorships, even going as far as having advertisements. A lot of Little League fields around. You see the billboards of community businesses out there in the outfield, that kind of thing. Do we want to corporize our school? Probably not, but if money is the issue and we can use that money in a constructive manner, obviously, it might be something to look into. I don't know any legislatures, but I played football at Simpson. There's quite a few gentlemen that I played football with at Simpson that are kind of higher ranking officials at on the state level. I would have no problem getting back in contact with those guys, seeing what flagpole we need to raise to try to squeeze some more money on the state. Parental involvement, volunteering, that kind of thing, to ease the burden on maybe something that we would have to pay somebody else to do. You know, maybe we look into, rather than paying overtime for buses or whatever. And once again, just spitballing here, I have no idea what we pay bus drivers or anything like that. But, you know, a parent with a Class B CDL, not to volunteer myself to grab a school bus, but I do have a Class B CDL. To sporting events or music events or things like that, you know, where we wouldn't have to pay them. They do it out of the goodness of their own heart. Want to make it clear, I'm not trying to take jobs away from school bus drivers either. But it just, I guess, in closing, those would be some ideas that I would like. And just to kind of elaborate on that, to have a, I firmly believe you have a strong school. You have a strong community. That turns into a strong state, a strong state. Lots of states turn into a strong United States. So I don't understand why education is under thought. So that would definitely be a priority if I were elected to the board. Thank you.
Okay. For our final question, we'll start with Ron Danks. If re-elected to the board, what goals would you like to see the board accomplish during another four-year term?
This is, to me, the most important question that we're going to answer tonight because we can review the past, we can talk about finance, what we'd like to do. But I think to set these concrete goals that we can achieve, as I mentioned, improving our trades and FFA by partnership with local corporations, I think we've done a good job of that. We need to keep after that and see ways we can improve. I think the idea, like I said, it just is dawned on me as I've thought about going to Central, Simpson, schools that are close by, they're facing their own very unique challenges and very difficult problems. I don't think they can sit in an ivory tower like they did 25 or 30 years ago and just say, people are going to come in and pay us, you know, $30,000 a year to go to school. They've got to recruit kids and get kids interested. And that's, again, when we talk about the languages, some of the things like that. And that's not just for kids who want to get a four-year degree. Like I said, that's going to be so useful for so many people because who knows what the world's going to look like in 25 or 30 years. One of the things that really intrigues me too is I saw somebody made a quote within the last couple of weeks that I read and said, you know, "I don't want to work 40 hours a week in a job I hate, for people I don't like and have no control." "I'd rather work three jobs at 50 hours a week when I control it and I love it." That's a really foreign concept to people of my generation and older people. But it's not a foreign concept to young people, this gig economy, where people are doing lots of things of their own. Kind of reminds me of like Frontier America. Everybody wants to be an entrepreneur. Everybody wants to do these different things. You know, all over on social media, you see people who are supplementing their income, or maybe that's their primary income, through some kind of marketing that they're doing or they're engaged in some career of some kind. I think, I don't have a concrete conception of how to do that, but I think that we need to implement some of those entrepreneurship-type courses into our curriculum, and that would be a great place to coordinate with people. One other thing I'm really big on, and I'm probably old school in some ways as people get, but I really want to take a look at, not just in Pleasantville, this is not a Pleasantville problem. I'm not picking on Pleasantville. Why do we have a rule? And is it helping us? Did a rule that made sense in 1960 still make sense in 2021? And I put, you know, I'm a huge believer, let's have a few rules that make sense and then enforce them. Let's give our kids, as they get older, and I really see that in the middle school, and as I've thought a lot about that, let's give them some more responsibilities, which they're getting. Let's also give them a little more freedom. I don't have concrete ideas on exactly how that looks. I have some ideas, you know, as far as more freedom in class time, some freedom to move around a little bit, you know, some things like that. And then as kids get older, they're transitioning to young adults. And one of the things, I think about this because my daughter's a junior. She's, you know, looking and going to college in a couple of years. All of a sudden, when you're 18 and you go to college, you go to trade school, you go into the workforce, you have to get yourself up. You have to get yourself around. You're responsible for yourself. Nobody is going to do that for you. Maybe mom, unless she, for a while, then she might yell at you if you're still at home. But, but we go from a very, very controlled environment through May to, hey, it's August. You're at the University of Minnesota. You're working at Vermeer. You got to do this stuff. You know, I think we can do a better job of that. And that's, like I said, that's just an idea I have. The other thing I would really, really like to see us do is encourage that from each child, really drill down on what do they like. I'm a huge reader. I love to read. That's by far my number one hobby. Every kid can find something they like to read about. It may not be The Great Gatsby. It may be about bow hunting. It may be about cattle. It may be about, it may be science fiction. But everyone can do that. That's what I'm talking about. Let's be innovative. Let's be creative. And let's make it count for every kid. Also, I really do, and I'm not saying this to, I really want to thank Shane. Got to know him a little bit up here, and Angel for participating. I've got some great ideas. So I've learned some things tonight about how to do this. Maybe better if I'm elected. If I'm not, you know, that's fine too. It's America. Everybody gets a vote. And also thank everybody, all the folks watching online and everybody here because this is our school. This is our community. We don't get another one. We make it the best that we can. So, thank you all.
All right. To Shane Sorenson, if you're elected to the board, what would you, what goals would you like to see the board accomplish in the four-year term?
I'll go ahead and do thank yous before I forget. So I want to thank everybody for coming out as well, everybody that's watching and everybody that's here. Getting to know Ron, getting to know Angel a little better through here today. It's encouraging knowing that there's people out there that have similar ideas. Maybe not exactly the same. All three of us aren't exactly the same. But you can see the passion, hopefully, between the three of us that we do care about our students and our community and our school district. So, thank you for your guys' time and thanks for helping us. One thing that kind of sticks out to me, and I know I touched on this earlier, is unity and the accountability. I just don't see, and like I said, this is from an outsider looking in. I have no idea what kind of unity we have on the school board and the teachers, between the board and the teachers and the parents and the teachers and things like that. I know my relationship with Kale's individual teachers, and I feel that to be a positive one. I felt like they communicated well with me and Jody on anything that Kale was maybe struggling with. Or they were always good to say how well he was doing. So, like I said, outsider looking in. But in my mind, in order for everything to work the way that I explained it before, and I don't want this to come off as a pipe dream. I want this to come off as something that is real and something that can happen. But if everybody, division in my mind is created when nobody understands exactly what they're supposed to be doing. Where there's too much changeover, there's too many ideas flowing in at once, and everybody's just trying to grasp this big idea, but nobody's really putting the pieces together. And then people start to retract and because maybe they don't want to ask the hard question. What is it I'm supposed to be doing? What is it I'm supposed to be doing? So like I said before, to have unity and accountability, everybody knows their role, everybody's responsible for their piece of the pie. And I think then things can flow well together at that point. So obviously, that would be one thing that I'd like to make sure is happening, if it isn't. One thing that came to my attention too, we have that junior high trip. See, in Ogden, we took our trip in our senior year. When we went to Washington DC, Gettysburg and all that, it's a great time. Probably one of the best experiences I ever had because that's probably somewhere I'll never go again. But we did fundraising from the time we were in preschool all the way through our senior year. So at the end of it all, it was nominal what our parents had to pay. I want to say it was a hundred, two hundred, maybe three hundred bucks that we had to pay for the whole trip. And like I said, just talking to other parents and things, I know we're taking it in the middle of our school life in junior high, eighth grade here. But it was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the parents have to foot the bill for the whole thing. Is that true? Okay. And it was also my understanding that some kids don't get to go because their parents can't afford it. And I find that unfortunate because that is something that, if it's truly a class trip, everybody should get to go. So my idea on that, I would like the board to, if I'm elected, I would like to address that issue and maybe start fundraising, some kind of project. We do it for after-prom. You see across from Casey's, the pop camps and things like that. I don't know what the answer is to the fundraising. I mean, I don't think we want everybody going door-to-door selling fruit for FFA and this and that. I know there's a lot of fundraisers out there, but there's an answer to that problem. I'd like to see that addressed. And then make sure that there's plenty of activities. And I know sometimes these cost money, but activities and clubs for kids to enhance and express their talents. I think that's very important. Me, Mike, it was a given. It was football, baseball, track, wrestling, that kind of stuff. That stuff's already built into the school. That's nothing, you know, abnormal to any school district. But math clubs and science clubs and, you know, even maybe a chess club or something for, you know, enhancing their critical thinking or strategic or, you know, things like that. I think we need to make sure that we have plenty of those so all of our kids have an opportunity to express themselves and enhance their talents. So those are just some of the things. Like I said, I do appreciate your time. Very passionate about hopefully being elected to the school board. I do love my community, obviously love my child. And I look forward to serving the community of Pleasantville. Thank you.
And then to Angel Bingham. If elected to the school board, what goals would you like to see the board work on in a four-year term?
Yeah. If I'm elected, I have big plans to get our community involved even more with our kids. I think we do an amazing job right now, but there's definitely community members who maybe don't have a kid in the district anymore, and they don't necessarily have a reason to get involved. So I would want to engulven our parents and our children. And this would include connecting the district by opening up opportunities for students and their main supporters, including parents, guardians, grandparents, their teachers, coaches, other key staff, to come together several times a year for community projects and learning nights. I believe if a kid finds something that they love and finds a way to make money doing it, some form of it, that they will have the ambition to follow a career path towards it. And as a kid in high school, I knew I loved to write, but it wasn't until a job shadow assignment when my sweet English teacher suggested that I shadow a local news station reporter and telling me that I, that I would be really good at that. And that was the first time I ever believed that I could write it for a living. So many of our kids, we just need someone to believe in them, and it's going to take this whole town to reach each of their hearts. My husband Brandon recently got involved with the Pleasantville Sports Association. And that was after some Pleasantville parents saw the need for our youth to play more competitively. And it's amazing just to see when people come together and just make something happen. I think the same can be done for other interests that kids have aside sports. And we have so many talented people who live here or are originally from here that we can lean on to help us. I have always wanted to see an entrepreneur's track, though I feel like we're on the stonewall notes here. No, just kidding. In the high school for kids who would want to start their own businesses. And yeah, we have awesome people to help with that. And I'm talking about Brandon Bingham and other entrepreneurs from our town, like Michael Cumming, those folks who literally had an idea and just ran with it. I have lots of other ideas that I'd love to share soon. But a goal to keep and attract the best teachers, one of my goals. I know we have awesome teachers living in Pleasantville, but they actually drive out of town to nearby districts. And I always hear how they can't give up their benefits or take a pay pet. I totally understand that. I think that there are other ways to entice them to teach our kids besides just upping, you know, and paying them a competitive wage they're already getting. I think teachers with experience that come in, I've heard recently that they automatically start them in eight years from our age, even if they have more than eight years' experience accrued. So I'd love to look at ways that we could work with that so that that doesn't discourage someone from coming back to Pleasantville because they have the experience already from teaching elsewhere. And then it was not so long ago that we had an awesome four-day school meeting in the winter. It saved a lot of money on heating the building, support staff, and lots more. It worked back then, and I would love for us to revisit and see if it is something that we could implement again. I understand that we kept those longer days that we changed to in the winter so that we have more flexibility with snow days and such. And the parents kind of already figure out what to do with their younger kids on a Monday morning and still let us go to work. So it would be, you know, great to talk to them and see what would a all-day Monday look like during the winter time. And I just think there's so many employers that are looking at flexible ways to keep their staff and retain staff. And a four-day work week is very appealing to some. So that's one of my things that I'd really like to look into. So I know I don't get to stay for cookies and punch, and I would love to meet those guys in person. But Dr. Alsworth asked my phone number. I can say it right now, but obviously not everybody has a PIN. But I know he'd share it with you if you were able to. But my cell phone is (515) 321-7530. And I would love, love, love to talk to anybody with any questions or any concerns that they have between now and the election as well. So I'm very available. And just thanks so much for everybody's time and the association's time in organizing this and Dr. Green's time as well. And I so appreciate the technology that's allowing me to be there even if my family is here with me in high school and in high school. So thank you so much.
Let's give the candidates a round of applause for their participation tonight. And I want to turn it back over to Mrs. Green.
Thank you, candidates, for coming and taking part in this. I know it's not the easiest thing, to sit in front of people and answer questions. So I appreciate you coming. I appreciate all of you for coming out on a rainy, cold night. And then, Dr. Green, thank you. I probably owe him a steak dinner again or something for doing this. So there is some punch and cookies. If you'd like to have a cookie or two or three, there are quite a few. So take a few with you. And then candidates will stay for a few minutes. If you have individual questions you'd like to ask. So thanks for coming. Have a good night. Get home safe.
Thank you.